The applicant will go ahead and present their application. Staff will give their report and recommendation, usually done in overview, but then we will go into public comments for three minutes per person. Then the applicant may cross-examine at that point. The staff may cross-examine. Members of the decision-making body through the chair may ask questions of the staff, applicant, and the participants. Final arguments may be made by the applicant, the staff, related solely to the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing and introduced to the record. The city attorney will advise the decision-making body to the applicable law and factual findings that must be made to approve or deny the application. We as a board will deliberate the application, and after deliberation, a vote shall be taken to approve. Approval conditions continue or deny the application. So, thank you for your patience in reading all that. With that being said, I will have the attorney read into the record the ordinance.
Mr. Chair, since you already did the ex parte, all of the matters that will be before you that are quasi-judicial are related to the substantial incompetent evidence standard, so we'll take care of that at the same time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The resolution number 2023-01 SD 22-12, Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Newberry, Florida, approving a preliminary plat for Moreland subdivision within a planned development PD zoning district as authorized under section 5.16 of the City of Newberry Land Development Regulations. On certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, tax parcel numbers are 02282-000-000 and 02235-000-000, consisting of approximately 1.69 acres, repealing all resolutions in conflict, providing an effective date. The appropriate motion at the appropriate time will be to pass Resolution Number 2023-01 as read by title only.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
John Paul, that's all you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The request before you tonight is a preliminary plat for the Moreland subdivision on approximately 1.69 acres located at 25749 Southwest First Avenue. Here is a general location of the property within the City of Newberry limits. Here is an aerial image of the property showing the current site conditions. The property was recently rezoned on July 11th from single family to planned development. With that rezoning was a preliminary development plan that included 15 lots. The preliminary plat before you tonight is just a guiding document for the final plat, so it has very conceptual information on it. And the development order for the proposed development will be included with the construction plans and final plat. Here is an image of the plat as the lots are subdivided. Here you can see that the lots will be oriented towards the adjacent public right-ofways. It'll have a private alley in between, and utilities will be brought in to the homes through the private alley. Here is a close-up, so you can see some of the lot subdivisions, as well as how the existing homes lies going to be reoriented. Here's a colored image, a little bit easier to digest than the black and white. This is from the Geotech report. And that concludes my presentation. Staff finds the request consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development regulations, and staff is recommending that the board recommend approval to the City Commission. Thank you. That completes my presentation.
Thank you. At this point, does the applicant want to present?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
My name is Chris Kamir. I'm the engineer of record for the project and representing the project with the City of Newberry here. And I have no real issue to bring up, except that we really wanted to clarify one of the points of the PD and then roll that into the preliminary plat, and it comes up with sidewalks along the streets. So I'm going to pass out some handouts to you all along those lines. And it comes down to a condition from our PD. So if I'll start and pass them out. Flip to the second page, and I didn't feel like you need to flip.
Hey, sorry to interrupt you, but I just want to make sure that this, I know this is part of our PD, but does, this is already filed into the record, correct, since he handed this out to us?
Not having seen it.
Okay, but considering that it's our PD, would that be something that we need to refile with this quasi?
Oh, yeah, that's part of the ordinance.
Okay, I just, sorry, I just want to make sure that, yeah, thank you.
Yes, we're following the quasi-judicial process, and that's very important to go along this. Very aware of that. So you see item number three there, it says to encourage and support an active community, the site will include sidewalks. And our confusion of how to implement that is that we have sidewalks on three sides of the block. However, on two of the sides, they're not on our side of the street. On the southern side, they are on our side of the street, and on the north side, we're proposing to build a new sidewalk. But we've been going back with city staff about whether or not we need to put sidewalks on both sides of those street. So I have another handout here that staff has not seen yet, so I'm not sure of the process, so I should hand them a copy as well. I just wanted to walk through, appreciate, for here, some feedbacks on this document of how we should apply standards. So our concern about providing sidewalks on both sides of the street is we have some existing large street trees. So on the first page there, you see with the red clouds around them, those are existing street trees, what we're trying to preserve. And at the very bottom of the first page, that's the current ordinance about local streets being done in subdivision. And I highlighted the portion there. It says at a minimum requirement, sidewalks shall be located on one side of the street. And so I realize it says minimal, but that's where we're sort of going back with staff on how to interpret where, what should we do for our street frontages. If you flip to the second page, on the back, it says page two, you can see our block. On the west side is the yellow line, so that we can help, I color-coded these, so we can talk about them a little easier. The yellow line is existing, the blue line is existing, the purple line is existing, and the red and the orange lines are also existing, and then the green line at the top, that's the new sidewalk we're proposing. But if you notice, all of them are on one side of the street. And also, if you expand out further into the neighborhoods, they have no sidewalks on both sides of the streets in this neighborhood. So then if you flip to page three, we're showing then the blue sidewalk. And again, colors are color-coded, so that you can reference back. You can see that existing sidewalk, and then you see on the left side of that page there, the large oak trees that we're trying to preserve as street trees there. We don't see a way to do sidewalks on that side without impacting the roots of those trees. On page four, you see the opposite road. Again, we have a sidewalk on one side of the street with trees on the opposite side. On page five, that's short, I sketched in where we are proposing our new sidewalk, because we have a more open area along that side of the street. If we go to page six, you'll see that purple line is the existing sidewalk on the south end of the property that we're proposing to maintain, and then you can see people parking there next to the high school right across the street. On page seven, we have a sidewalk that was added there fairly recently, but it's right across the street from Little Red Schoolhouse, and even at that point, they have liner trees on the west, on the south side of the road, on the left side of that picture, of existing trees that are remaining without sidewalk. And the same thing is also shown on page eight. So with, with your feedback on this preliminary plat, we'd appreciate some clarification about whether or not we could just keep with sidewalks on one side of the street, or whether or not we'd have to provide sidewalks on both sides of the street. And that would give us further clarification as we go into the construction plans. And that concludes my presentation. If you have questions about the pictures or talking through that, I'd appreciate the answer and happy to answer those questions.
I appreciate that, thank you very much. Right now, we're just going to see if there's any public comment on this matter. No, all right. And did you want to cross-examine staff or staff, did you want to cross-examine the applicant on this?
I just have a few comments.
Yeah, please, yeah, so. Before you start, I just want to ask one quick question to our city attorney on the quasi-judicial proceeding. Since the order is the applicant may cross-examine, then the staff may cross-examine. Since the applicant's not cross-examining at the moment, but staff is asking questions, can the applicant come back and rebut?
Yes.
Yes, on this cross-examining, so we can go back. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Again, John Paul Perez, planning on economic development. The sidewalk on the north side, which on the printout is the green one, is the required sidewalk. They have to provide, provide that regardless, because this development has houses facing towards the street with no driveway access. It is an opportunity to put sidewalks in there to create a more pedestrian-oriented type development. These are smaller homes oriented towards the street, pedestrian scale. It's a walkable neighborhood, it's located near a school, safe route to school. It is part of the initial comments we had with the applicant during the preliminary plat review. There's a little bit of pushback, so we're hoping to finalize that conversation with the applicant as we got closer to final plat and construction plans for the project, which would also be at the point where we'd have more final details on site improvements and whatnot. And so we, we are definitely encouraging the applicant to provide sidewalks on all sides. And lucky for us tonight, we do have the executive director of the CRA here, and we even discussed possibly utilizing some CRA funds to assist with the process of putting in sidewalks. But again, those conversations are ongoing and haven't been finalized at this particular stage. We're hoping to have a more final answer from the board when we get to final plat construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, did you, oh, I'm sorry, so staff?
Mr. Chair, if I might, since my name was taken in vain, I just want to give you a little bit more background on the thinking. This is purely conceptual at this point, because the CRA is actually guided by a board, which is our elected body, not by the executive director. The executive director just implements the will of the board. So this would have to be something that we would present to the board as an option. Our thinking here is that, based on the elevations and such that have been presented for this little neighborhood, this, this is an experiment. This is a first of its kind for an infill project at higher density. And staff's concern is that to actually hit the target for the aesthetic that this neighborhood is going for, that sidewalks in front of each of the houses is actually very important. They're going to be generally smaller houses on smaller lots, it's a higher density, and we're just concerned that the aesthetic, you know, the examples that we were shown all have sidewalks in front, and that kind of ties this small neighborhood development together. And so one of the concepts that I thought of was, well, if instead of First Avenue, they did the sidewalk on 258th, and then also, as an additional requirement, would be on 257th, then perhaps if the commission, excuse me, the, the CRA board approved, then the CRA could pay for the First Avenue sidewalk as sort of trying to work with the developer to tie the whole thing together. We don't really necessarily think that the sidewalk on the southern end is as critical just because you do have the one on the, across the street, but having that sidewalk in front of these smaller townhouse-style structures, we think is, is important to the aesthetic tying it all together, so that it, and again, this being our test case for this type of development in the downtown area, we want to make sure we get it right the first time, so that when the next one comes up and the next one, we have this as an example to point back to and say, you know, this is what we're, this is what we're aiming for, this is how great this looks, this is how, how well it worked in the downtown environment. So that's sort of the consideration that kind of went behind that. Not to say that we're planning on spending any CRA money, that would have to be a, a direction from the, from the CRA board.
Thank you, Brian. Did you want to rebuttal on anything?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think our main concern is the aesthetics of those street trees and more of urban forest. You know, once you get rid of larger trees in, in a, in a city neighborhood, it's really hard for them to come back. They're sort of midlife, so they still have a long life ahead of them, and I'm just worried about installing new sidewalks and tearing into the footprint of, of those roots. And then even with brand-new subdivisions, they may even have the option just doing sidewalk on one side. The aesthetic will be, you're in your house, you have a front porch associated with it, so that means the main foundation is not close, closer to these trees, it'll be lesser foundation for just a porch. And then you'll walk down a front sidewalk, they can be arranged to go around those trees, and then you just cross the street in order to get to the main sidewalk, if you want to walk a certain direction or go downtown for, for the restaurant. I just think the trees, and that's why I provided those pictures, they're so close to the pavement, putting the sidewalk behind them would put them into lots by, by big distance if we're trying to preserve a root, and it would make the project not, not buildable. Putting it next to the street would potentially damage the trees, and they're just too much of a precious resource that takes 30 years to grow. That's why we're looking for direction, since the code gives, it's not 100% on its direction, it gives a minimum requirement. So I appreciate your consideration of that.
Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Yes.
One of the items that we recently dealt with was an arborist from Latre County assisted the city on, on another matter that dealt with a tree issue here in the city. And I wonder if, understanding you're an engineer, and you're opining on the issue related to the trees, and you may absolutely be right that it would affect the root system, but if you could consult, the city does engage the county arborist out of courtesy. I don't know if they would help us on something like this. The key question is, can you do this without damaging the root system of these, and it looks like these are live oak trees? So how, how and can that be done? And if it cannot, then we need to know that from an expert, either your private expert or, or a county's expert.
Sorry to interject, Mr. Chair, but we have opportunities still, so a direction can be given. We still have to go through the construction process, and we have another opportunity to come in back in front of you with this construction plans, but if there's an option given to evaluate that, we can go with the county arborist and get sort of a city's perspective on protecting those, those, those root systems. I'm open to that as well, versus, I'd like a firm answer, but we have an opportunity again where it won't delay our process at all, it would help give staff for the direction, and I'm happy with that if they're happy with that.
All right, thank you. All right, at this point, I'll ask the decision-making body through the chair to ask questions of the staff and the applicant. Miss Thomas.
I do know that the roots will come up, so it, it might crack the cement, so I, I'm very well aware that there's issues for that. There has to be something that, and maybe even the arborist could, you know, suggest what to do. I think that's the great, that, that's the best place to start. In, in reference to the sidewalks, I was just in Fernadina a couple of weeks ago, and we were downtown, and there's sidewalks on every side of the road, and some of them are really old, some of them are newer. It's, it's an old town. It looks so quaint and, and so well-kept and put together. It gives a charm to the neighborhood that I can't, I, I don't even know how to describe it. It looks like a neighborhood with the sidewalks. So me, me personally, seeing how this is, we're blazing new trails here, right? Why not go ahead and blaze them great and put the sidewalks in and just make that the example of others to follow? Because we are a small town, and when you, when you are walking in these areas, it is nice to have, the sidewalks look nice. Now, I'd rather not lose the trees, for sure. But the sidewalks sound important to me.
I understand, I understand that completely, and really, the sidewalks aren't that expensive. What it comes down to is that the trees, in this case, that's why I give the pictures, they're so close to the pavement, and the flare of the base of the trunk is so big at that point.
They're very well established.
And they're very established without a sidewalk.
Yes.
Where in other cities, if you have a street tree there, it kind of grows around the sidewalk, gets used to it, you repair it, replace it, you're not taking out a huge chunk. We may have to take out a big, you know, four-inch, five-inch root that's near the surface, and now you have a tree that's maybe damaged close to houses or something like that. That's why I'm very open to leaving it to staff to consult with even the county arborist, because again, we deal with trees of the county all the time in that replay issue.
Oh, sorry to interrupt, but before we even continue, I need to know this to help, to help with the guidance. These sidewalks, who is responsible for the sidewalk? Would it be the homeowners? Would it be the city? And before you answer this question, there's a reason behind it. The liability of a sidewalk growing, I, I see it all the time, a root will start lifting a sidewalk, it creates an elevation, someone trips and falls, the next calls Morgan and Morgan, and now who's on the hook? Is it the city? Does this belong to them? Because if, if this tree root system damages the homeowner's driveway or whatnot, and someone trips and falls on that, that's on them. My concern is protecting the city and preventative. And I don't want to build a sidewalk where there's going to be potential hazards. I don't want to, first off, I don't want to kill any of these trees. These trees have been longer here, longer than any of us. But other than that, I don't want to see anybody get hurt, and then I don't want to see the city being sued or someone being sued, because we didn't do our diligence to protect our citizens and potentially causing trip-and-fall hazards. Because I don't care what route you cut, this is going to end up damaging the sidewalk at some point, and someone's going to trip and fall. And I hate to say this, but kids love walking up and down these streets, and if they have a sidewalk that they're going to walk on, this could be one of our kids that ends up getting hurt. So I just want to know who's responsible for this sidewalk, who's responsible for the repairs, who's responsible for the liability if someone does get hurt on these sidewalks?
So, Mr. Chair, once the sidewalk is, is constructed and dedicated, it will be in the right-of-way, so it'd be constructed and then dedicated to the city, it becomes ownership of the city, and so the city would ultimately, from that point forward, be charged with maintenance and repair. But it's no different than any other sidewalk installed anywhere else in this, in the city. Eventually, trees are going to grow up, and if we made every decision based on potential liability like that, then we wouldn't have sidewalks anywhere in the city.
And I, and just to compliment our staff and our workers, we have the best staff. And I, I'll say it in the United States, the minute something's wrong, we have supervisors and people on the ground running to fix issues. So if something does happen, I know it's going to get repaired fast, it's not going to be like other local cities that I know that will take forever to fix something. We will address the issue. I just, like, you know, with this being so close is, is concerning to me, so I just want to put that out there while we're discussing this. I know this probably could go more into the deliberation part versus asking questions of staff, but I felt that that was a question that needed to be answered, who would be liable for fixing, repairing, and all that.
So what, so what I hear is, the best place to start this whole process is with an arborist, and see if it can be done? Yep, that's, because I know you're wanting an answer and you're wanting some closure, right? So I would say an arborist.
I have the time, I have the time, yeah.
Right, right, exactly.
Well, we have direction.
And I know I've tripped on sidewalks plenty of times that have a crack in them, so that, that would be me, I would do that, but I've, I've never called a lawyer because of it. But I think that would be your place to start, would be the, I mean, they could tell you if it could be done, how it could be done to save the trees, because I'm like him, I, I really want to save the trees, too.
And it's fortunate, we have the time.
Sounds like that's a great start.
We're going to come back to you all with construction plans, and it's just giving direction, that the preference would be have a sidewalk, unless it's going to damage trees, that would be a condition that would be completely amenable to us.
Yeah, I have, I have something. One thing about having a first of its kind and this type of neighborhood, we shouldn't try to lock ourselves into this, it has to be this way. So just like the curvature of the neighborhood like I live in, where you couldn't put a fence in the backyard, stuff like that, you're locked in to what the code says. And with this kind of neighborhood, with the trees being where they are, you want to kind of save the trees for one, and also not set a precedent or not set a standard of, you got to put aside regardless. And you should have a little flexibility into where you design things to have a little buffer from neighborhood to neighborhood, from lot to plot, from plot to plot, to be able to be a little bit more flexible. So I don't think we should try to lock ourselves into one design based off this type of neighborhood. If we're going to go down that road, being able to have a little more flexibility, so the next person or when you're doing your part, we could be able to just move on from the next process. So I still want to see what you can do with the arborist, but for the most part, I would rather us not be locked in to only doing it one way.
That's kind of what I wasn't saying, too, you don't want to be locked in, but my suggestion was to start at, at the starting place there with the arborist and make, see if you can do it, just to see if you can do it. Because we don't know.
No objections, no hard feelings.
Because if you can't do it, we're not going to be locked into it, you won't be able to do it, period. But it would be a great, I think it would be wonderful if you could and save the trees.
I, we're, we're being selfish, those trees are.
They're beautiful.
They're, they're a great selling point. I mean, they're just, yeah, you can't get that.
I, I love them.
All right, that's why we live in an old neighborhood myself versus a new subdivision, for that reason.
If I, if I may ask a question of the applicant, is this community going to have a community mailbox?
I, I don't think we've gotten anywhere near to that point. We do have common area, so that could be a way it, it gets done, but that's why we have all the traffic to that private alley in the back, so trash collection, all the water meter boxes will be in the back, so the fronts will just be the plain front with, with, with a porch on them.
Because the reason I ask is on page 73 of our application, or of the, of our, of our packet, so we have this really nice color-coordinated, you know, one through 14, but then if you look outside of the one through 14s, you see all these little, they look like sidewalks that push out to basically the street.
Oh, correct. So that's the front walkway that you could get to the street and then cross the street to get to the sidewalk and other side of the road. What, what page is that, sorry?
Uh, page 73 of our, of our docket.
Yes, you did a good job of hearing it. Yes, so, so you'll, they'll be, they won't have those, like, grass that you're walking across, they get from their front porch, get around that tree in a way that's the least impactful to, to those roots.
So I feel like a jerk asking this, but you're kind of like encouraging someone to cross the street in the middle of the street.
That's exactly right.
I mean, it happens all the time.
Exactly right.
We have cars that cross everywhere, but.
We're savage.
Yeah, we just, but to me, I'm just like, you're encouraging someone just to like bolt across the street in the middle of a.
Exactly right.
Versus, like, I would see, see, if I see that, I'm more inclined to encourage having a sidewalk, because now you have a place to walk to get to the sidewalk, go to the corner, versus my sidewalk goes right into the middle of 257th, sorry, I just.
And all the other roadways.
Since we're in the design process here.
Come right up to the street, that's a traditional historic neighborhood. That's, the, the speeds are slow enough and slow enough. The example I give is roundabouts, okay? So I'm with my father-in-law, he used to do road, uh, road and bridge canal maintenance in Miami-Dade County, and I was over in Deland, and they built a two-lane roundabout, and I have my drone, and he's complaining about it, so I put my drone up there, and it turns out, roundabouts are complicated, but what they do is they have you watch and actually drive the, the, the traffic, versus just, I'm just going to go at the red, red light or green light. And the problem was, they made the center turn thing, the, the center area a little bit too small, so people started crossing lanes. And with my drone up there, it was like, ah, obviously, I measured it off in the plans, oh my gosh, are they ever going to fix it? No. But the point is, you bring it down to where everything's are slower, more walkable areas, just because a sidewalk comes to a street doesn't make it dangerous, it's about the character that we're trying to, trying to do here. And that's where the trees actually help out a lot. Sorry, I went a little bit outside.
Sorry, I don't mean to hijack a lot of this, but does anybody have?
Mr. Chair, our.
Mr. Chair, are curbs required for this development?
That, that's a staff. Uh, yeah, are curbs required for this development?
No, Mr. Chair.
Was that, please tell me that's not your only question.
Oh, yes.
Thomas, or did you have any questions?
I'm good.
We'll go into the deliberation process.
So with that being said, um, we can go into final arguments could be made by the applicant staff related solely to the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing. Do we have any final arguments? And, all right. Um, with that being said, we, as a decision-making body, we can go ahead and start deliberating on the item. And remind us that it's related solely to this particular, um, subject or matter. I think he's just looking for guidance at this point. Um, this is nothing set in stone.
Only one side of the subdivision has really affected the most by this, which is to walk out the front door. But for the most part, it's just, you don't want to damage the trees for one. Work around the trees, let's do that as much as possible. But I've done concrete, I know how trees and roots work. So the biggest thing is you want to make sure something won't be damaged later on down the line. Get around it, and aesthetically keep the look of that neighborhood the way you want it, then we can. Can't, then it should be okay as well. Either way.
I think first things first is, um, is the arborist route. Uh, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll say it, I'm not a big fan of putting a sidewalk in that part. Um, just, just because of the tree issue. Feel that there's a lot of trees involved here, it's not like one or two.
If I'm counting right.
Um, I see five.
Haven't counted them.
Haven't counted them on this.
Yeah, that group of trees there?
That's, those poor trees, five, six, seven, eight, nine trees.
Yeah, that, that clump I kind of count as one, yes. I'm mainly worried about those five on, on, on the east side, those are really nice.
So I, my, I'm on board with the arborist as well. I'd really like to identify, do we have confirmation that these are live oaks? Or are they water oaks or turkey oaks, or something that's going to fall over? Uh, I mean, that doesn't have to, that, that's where the arborists will come in.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that wasn't a question, so to me, like, I would like a little bit more certainty about the, the lifespan of these trees. Because, I, I mean, don't get me wrong, guys, I'm all for the trees, please, just have as many trees as possible. But if this, if this is a prototype neighborhood, if we're looking to do more infill neighborhoods like this. That's not, that's not, you know, it's not going to look exactly the same. It's not going to be the same, you know, as the surrounding neighborhood around it. To me, this is already a big wide-open lot with not a lot of coverage on it anyway. I like the idea of having the sidewalks for the aesthetic and the containment of the neighborhood, personally. But, I mean, I, I, I think that, that my questions lie in like, you know, if you can move your sidewalk out and take it all the way down to the street. Like, I've seen a lot of driveways like that, but I haven't seen a lot of sidewalks empty out into the street. And I question what the curb appeal and aesthetics of that is going to be.
Yeah, to, to your point on two fifty-eighth, which is the yellow arrow on page four. I mean, that, that sidewalk is pretty, pretty close to the street, and so is the blue one.
I would say one thing, the two sidewalks on the north and south of the neighborhood that are already existing. If you look at how most people utilize their neigh, their houses, most, most front doors go to their driveway. But the way this is designed, driveway is the back of the house. Most people would probably use the back of the house mainly, and they can walk out to either one of those sidewalks already exist. So putting them in the east and west side really wouldn't change the fact that you would use that neighborhood the most.
Um, I just would point out that we normally have sidewalk constructions when we do construction phase, not when we do plat phase. So I think what the, what he's asking for is exactly what you guys have already said. If we can save the trees, we want the sidewalks. If you can't save the trees, I don't think we need to, to, to figure out, because we'll have another bite at the apple when we get to the next step. Right now, we're really just supposed to be thinking about the plats and how the houses are going to be set, and those kinds of things. So I understand the request for some feedback as we go through. But it sounds to me like all of y'all are, are in agreement that if we can save the trees, if it's a question, right, then come back to it. But they, it sounds like staff is already talking with the applicant, they're already continuing these conversations, looking for other options. So I'm not sure exactly how much we want to try to fix it all tonight, since we'll, this will be handled when we do construction.
So I think at this point, it's just, uh, like the mayor was saying, um, the guidance I think we're all in, into. If the arborist's involved, we can save the trees, do the sidewalks, okay? Um, but with that, second, let me get back to all my. So do we have any questions on the plat itself? We got to go back to the plat.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Baker.
I have some questions about the setback. Given that there's zero setback in the front. Um, are we going to create a situation where we've had in some of these newer developments? Where then every change becomes a request for variance with the limited setbacks that we proposed?
Great question, uh, Board Member Baker. These are really tight lots, and so I don't expect that there's going to be any changes to the houses once they're constructed. Um, so I, and Chris Gomir, the engineer record, can correct me if I'm wrong. But these are probably final construction at time of construction, just because they're such tight lots to begin with.
Agreed, that, that, that's the plan, that these would be, you know, you're sort of picking it out with, with, with the developer, maybe makes final changes. But there, there tended to be a very specific kind of house built there. Uh, but additionally, that zero-foot setback has already been approved with the PD. So we're just reflecting that now in this preliminary. I hope I answered your question?
Um, so this is just based on the plat, and just for verification, this isn't on the construction of the home, whether it's two-story, one-story. This is just basically on the plat and.
Correct, we.
Correct.
When we come back with the construction plans and final plat, we will have elevations for you.
So, I mean, this, this project is Lee's project, correct? If I'm not mistaken?
You're correct, Mr. Chair.
So this is where, um, this was, uh, in July, we discussed this. I do want to, you know, express my gratitude in the sense that pretty much what we told them to do, he kind of did. Or he, he actually did not kind of. He, he took our, you know, our suggestions and whatnot. So I feel like the plat is lined up pretty much comparable to what, what we had discussed back in July. I don't, I don't see any, me personally, I don't see any other concern. This one, on the plat, obviously, if things come back, I just want us to take for the record, if things come back, things change, you know? This is just based off of this part here. Um, if there's no other deliberation, I will entertain a motion on the item.
Uh, this is a follow-up to Board Member Baker's question. This board, and I believe the commission, had recently discussed, um, asking developers to do, I can't quite remember the term, but they were like site surveys. To ensure that what is in the plat is what's got, is what's being built. Because right now, we approve it, and then it's kind of up to the developer to lay it out. And if they get five feet off, or they make a mid, a mid-build change, and they add a bay window or something, there's no step in the process. And in this, because we are so tight, are we putting that in the developer's agreement as a part of the PD? That they're go, they're going to do a survey to make sure that they stay within the bounds?
Uh, Mr. Chair, what the mayor's referring to is called a foundation survey. And it's basically, uh, sort of a survey light, but it, it establishes exactly where the boundary lines are. And confirms that the foundation is laid within the prescribed setbacks. And so, um, I don't believe that we've made it a requirement, but it'd be incumbent on the, the contractor when building the house to do it. Because otherwise, you could very easily.
When you get one of these wrong, and you sort of messed up the whole row.
Yes, sir.
So it seems like in this kind of a situation, that would be something that would be valuable for everybody's sake.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this has nothing to do with this project, but in general, many times, banks require those foundation surveys because they don't want to have a building that they're paying for that's violating setbacks. But then many times, they don't. So that's where you'll have a house that'll been there for twenty years, but it's violating setbacks. And then all of a sudden, a bank will require it, and then they come to you for a variance.
Is it, do you, is it your intention to do the foundation surveys? Do you know that?
Uh, so it, it comes up, it's, it's, it's amazing, and I'm just talking about from my experience as a, as a civil engineer doing subdivision projects. When they're done, and when they're not done. It's, it's very varied.
Uh, my question is, is it your intention to do it? Is it part of the PD? Do we need to recommend to the commission that they make it part of the PD? Are you already going to do it voluntarily? That's my question.
So.
Do we need to consider this? Or are you already going to do it?
So many times, there's, there's two different kinds of subdivisions. Subdivisions where you just build the lots, and then you just sell them, and then you're done with them, kind of subdivisions. And then custom homes come on, and then those builders can get sloppy. Versus the kind of subdivision where you almost have an older owner-builder building them, in which case, they have a much more stringent policy. So again, no one's checking this, but they're just don't want to get stuck where they're responsible for a house being built in different areas. And that's where this is sort of the latter. And also with the smaller lots, it's actually easier, because we have straight lines versus subdivisions with current, curvilinear lines, where it's hard to tell where some of those setback lines go. So my answer is, I don't think I've ever seen it required as part of any preliminary plat or process. But it's been fixed and caught based on established processes in the subdivision building process, depending on what kind of product is being produced. In this case, I would assume they would have no issue, um, staying within those lines. Because these, these, these lots are very fixed. You could get that with a tape measure and, and figure out what those requirements are. Versus a weird corner lot or triangular lot, um, that you would see in many other types of subdivisions. So that's an answer and non-answer, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. Uh, before, uh, before we entertain a motion, guys, sorry. Um, I know the PDR, but he also handed us, I just want for the record, he handed us like this really nice, and I'm thankful for the coordinate, color coordination. Is that something that was turned in to staff? Or do we need a copy to be turned in for the record of evidence?
Staff has a copy.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I, I, like I said, for qu, I want to make sure that we're all. All right. So based off the evidence that we've seen here on the plat. Do we need to, when we entertain a motion, since they're asking for guidance on the arborist, do we have to put that into a motion? Or is that something completely separate? He asked for guidance, we gave him the guidance? Thank you.
Just for further guidance. The reason is that we have run into, as the mayor was just stating, all kinds of, of problems with foundations that are poured six inches over a bay window. I mean, we've spent a great deal of time.
Uh, if I'm, I'm not. So I've written this down, but as, uh, I believe as a chair, I am not allowed to entertain a motion. Um, but I, I can't make a motion. So if there's no other deliberation or questions, gladly listen to a motion and take it from there.
I'll move to approve with the conditions that they consult the county arborist and that they add foundational surveys to the developer agreement.
I have a motion from Ms. Baker. Second. I have a second. Are there any comments on the motion? Any public comments on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion passes unanimous. This will, uh, this will go before the city commission and be heard at a city commission meeting on January twenty-third. All right, um, thank you. So we're just bouncing, we're bouncing from quasi to legislative. It says. I, I, yeah, no, but I'm just saying, like, this is now, just so we know. We're, the next four are legislative, but I already went through the quasi judicial proceedings, so I don't have to repeat it. But we will be putting a legislative hat on for the moment. All right, um, Mr. Attorney, I guess we'll read into the record.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, this is an ordinance of the City of Newberry, Florida, amending ordinance number four dash ninety-one as amended relating to an amendment of the future land use plan map of the City of Newberry Comprehensive Plan of fifty or fewer acres of land under small-scale development amendment procedures established in the small-scale amendment procedures of section one six three point three one eight seven of the Florida statutes as amended. Providing for a change in land use classification from Latchell County Rural Agricultural, less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres to the City of Newberry Agricultural, less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres. On certain lands within the corporate limits of the City of Newberry, Florida, tax parcel numbers are zero one eight five nine dash zero zero one dash zero zero zero. Zero one eight zero six dash zero zero one dash zero zero zero, consisting of approximately twenty-two point seven five contiguous acres. Providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing effective date, the appropriate motion is passed, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero one. Punience reading by title only.
Thank you very much, JP, you got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again, John Paul Perez, Planning and Economic Development Department. The, um, presentation I'm about to give you is going to be a summary of the next four items on the agenda. Um, the future land use map amendments that, um, I'll be presenting are all, um, recently annexed properties. And so the change is a like-for-like, very ministerial process from changing the land use from county to city. Um, no real change in actual uses happening on the properties currently. Um, so again, this is, uh, this presentation that you're receiving currently is for items three through six. Um, all requests are to amend the future land use map, uh, classification from Latchell County Rural Agriculture to City of Newberry Agriculture. This is a like-for-like change, and this is for di, for different properties, all annexed on July eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, the image before you currently are the four different properties, um, as they're located now within the limits of the City of Newberry. This includes the, uh, Brown's property, um, Blackford's property, Martin's property, and Fowler's property. I'll be going into, uh, closer up image of each, so you can see them. Um, this is the Blackford's property, located on the west side of, um, County Road two thirty-five, um, up by Northwest Forty-sixth Avenue. Um, the totality of this property is about twenty-two point seven five acres. Um, and again, this was annexed into the city on July eleventh. This is the Brown's property, um, on the west side of the city, close to the county line, um, just west of Northwest Thirty-second Avenue. This is the Fowler property, uh, located on the south, uh, south side of State Road twenty-six. And lastly, this is the Martin's, uh, property, um, again, um, by, by the county line, uh, also close to Northwest. uh, also close to Northwest Thirty-second Avenue. And, um, just for procedure's sake, this is a like-for-like land use map amendment. Um, they will have one, uh, planning and zoning board meeting, uh, they'll have two city commission meetings. Um, the future land use map amendments are legislative in process, so, um, it'd be a pretty quick process here and after. Uh, these are small scale, so there's no transmittal to the state. Then they come back for a second hearing. We will send it to the state after they have been adopted. Staff finds all requests consistent with the city of Newberry Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulation, and staff recommends, um, that the planning and zoning board recommend approval to the city commission. I am available for any questions for any of the future, um, items. Thank you.
All right, guys, do we have any questions for staff, or? It's pretty straightforward, I feel. All right, what does staff need for us on this one? Just a motion to approve?
Um, do you have to open up for a public comment, closed public comment, or?
Is there any public comments on the, this particular matter? Oh, I thought he said I had to open up for public comments before I can even entertain a motion. That's what I was like, that's what I thought.
Sorry, maybe I misunderstood the question. I was, I was reading something. So, you do need a motion. Once you have a motion, then you can open up the public.
Okay, so, that's what I was asking. So, staff, you just need a motion from us at this point? Well, yeah, we're gonna go one, and then.
Saying the same thing.
Yeah. I just, for the record and for our viewers, I just want to make sure that everybody, huh, we got, we got one viewer. So, we have no questions, I will entertain a motion, and then we'll take it in comments.
I'll move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one, CPA twenty-three dash zero one.
I have a motion from Ms. Baker.
Second.
Right, from Ms. Polo. Uh, do we have any questions on the motion? Public questions on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion passes unanimously. All right. Even though these are all the same, we still gotta read each one, correct into the record. Thank you. So, Mr. Attorney, if you would be so kind.
An ordinance of the city of Newberry, Florida, amending ordinance number four dash ninety-one as amended relating to an amendment of the future land use plan map of the city of Newberry Comprehensive Plan of fifty or fewer acres of land under the small scale development amendment procedures established under the small scale amendment provisions of section one six three point three one eight seven of the Florida statutes as amended, providing for a change in land use classification from Latchell County Rural Agricultural, less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres to the city of Newberry Agricultural, less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres on certain lands within the corporate limits of the city of Newberry, Florida, tax parcel number is zero one eight eight seven dash zero one zero dash zero zero zero, consisting of approximately four point three five contiguous acres of land, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing effective date, the appropriate motion is passed, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero three, upon its reading by title only.
Thank you very much. All right. Even though we gotta read each one, do you have to come back up and present each one as well?
No, staff is available for questions if there are any.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three, CPA twenty-three dash zero two.
I have a motion from Ms. Baker.
I second that.
I had a second from Vice Chair Long. I love the eagerness that our board is flying through these. All right, any, uh, public, any comments on this? Any public comments on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion passes. All right, we are moving on to the next one, Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Chair, this is an ordinance of the city of Newberry, Florida, amending ordinance four dash ninety-one as amended relating to an amendment to future land use plan map of the city of Newberry Comprehensive Plan of fifty or fewer acres of land under the small scale development amendment procedures established under the small scale amendment provisions of section one six three point three one eight seven of the Florida statutes as amended, providing for a change in land use classification from Latchell County Rural Agricultural, less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres to the city of Newberry Agricultural, less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres on certain lands within the corporate limits of the city of Newberry, Florida. Tax parcel numbers are zero one nine two eight dash zero zero five dash zero zero zero, consisting of approximately twenty point six eight contiguous acres of land, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing effective date, appropriate motion is passed, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five, upon its reading by title only.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five, CPA twenty-three dash zero three.
Ms. Baker with the hat trick, with three motions in a row.
Second.
I got a second from Ms. Polo. Do we have any? Really, guys, this is what you're gonna do to me? The two public? You drove him out of here? No, I don't have any public comments. Hearing no public comments, we don't have any comments, right? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion passes unanimously. All right, and next, number six.
Mr. Chair, this is an ordinance of the city of Newberry, Florida, amending ordinance number four dash ninety-one as amended relating to the amendment of the future land use plan map of the city of Newberry Comprehensive Plan of fifty or fewer acres of land under the small scale development amendment procedures established under the small scale amendment provisions of section one six three point three one eight seven of the Florida statutes as amended, provided for a change in land use classification from Latchell County Rural Agriculture, less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres to the city of Newberry Agricultural, less than or equal to one dwelling unit per five acres on certain lands within the corporate limits of the city of Newberry, Florida. Tax parcel numbers are zero one eight three four dash zero zero eight dash zero 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 and zero one eight three four dash zero one two dash zero zero zero, consisting, consisting of approximately forty contiguous acres of land, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing effective date, appropriate motion is passed, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, as read by title only.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, CPA twenty-three dash zero four.
All right, I got a motion from Ms. Baker.
I second.
Whoa, all right, we got a, whoa, she jumped in. So, we got a second from this. That, no, that's good. She, Ms., Ms. Thomas seconds the motion for the record. Um, do we have any comments? For on the, on the motion? No comments, public comments. All right, everybody, slow down. All right, hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, guys, we are moving back to quasi judicial. I do not have to go over the whole proceedings again, because we are still in it, so. Staff, we already did an ex parte communications for everything, so if staff can go ahead and give us their overview. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, can you please read into the ordinance?
This is an ordinance of the city of Newberry, Florida, relating to the amendment of the official zoning atlas for the rezoning of twenty-two point seven five acres, more or less, pursuant to an application by the city of Newberry, amending the official zoning atlas of the city of Newberry Land Development Regulations, providing for rezoning from Latchell County Agricultural A zoning district to the city of Newberry Agricultural A zoning district on certain lands within the corporate limits of the city of Newberry, Florida, which have been annexed there too. Tax parcel numbers are zero one eight zero six dash zero zero one dash zero 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 and zero one eight five nine dash zero zero one dash zero zero zero, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing effective date, appropriate motion is passed, ordinance number twenty twenty-three, as read by title only.
Thank you very much, JP. For yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, John Paul Perez, planning and economic development. Um, this is the rezoning component of the future land use map amendments that you had just approved. Um, again, these properties were annexed into the city on July eleventh. Um, they currently have county agricultural A zoning designations. We are looking to change that to city of Newberry agricultural A, uh, zoning designation. Um, again, I'm gonna give you one presentation for items seven through ten. Um, if you have any questions about the items, I'd be happy to address those. Um, but this is my only intended presentation and my last one for the evening. Um, these are like-for-like rezonings. These are the properties. Um, I'm gonna just go through these slides. If you have any questions about the properties that I haven't already addressed, please, please stop me. All right, um, public hearing process is very similar to the future land use map amendments, except these are, um, city level only, no transmittal to the state. Rezoning is dependent on, um, the adoption of the future land use map amendments. Um, and they will go to one PCB hearing, and then to, uh, city commission hearings. Staff finds the request consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Regulations, and staff recommends that the planning and zoning board forward a recommendation for approval to the city commission on items seven through ten. That completes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Uh, the applicant is not available. Public comments, not available. Applicant's not here to cross-examine. Staff, it's not gonna cross-examine themselves. At this point, do we have any questions for staff? All right, um, final arguments. I'll go ahead, deliberation, the only question I have, since this is technically quasi judicial at this point, um, do you, you still don't have to come up for each one, or do you have to come up for each one?
Um.
Since you did all four technically.
Uh, I think I'll defer to the city attorney on that question.
I, I think you can give the, um, since there's no other witnesses and you can give the uniform, um, testimony like you did on the, on the, um, on the legislative matters.
All right, so, we're good on that. Uh, with that being said, when I deliberate, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two, LDR twenty-three dash zero one.
I have a motion from Ms. Baker.
I second that motion.
I have a second from Vice Chair Long. Any comments on the motion? Hearing none, there's no public comments on this. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion passes. Moving on to eight, if the city attorney can read it to the ordinance, number eight.
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance of the city of Newberry, Florida, relating to the amendment of the official zoning atlas for the rezoning of four point three five acres, more or less, pursuant to an application by the city of Newberry, amending the official zoning atlas of the city of Newberry Land Development Regulations, providing for rezoning from Latchell County Agricultural A zoning district to the city of Newberry Agricultural A zoning district on certain lands within the corporate limits of the city of Newberry, Florida, which have been annexed there too. Tax parcel number is zero eight eight seven, zero one eight eight seven dash zero one zero dash zero zero zero, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing effective date, the appropriate motion is passed, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero four, upon its reading by title only.
All right, thank you. JP gave us an overview. Um, at this point, we will deliberate or go to a motion.
I will make a motion to recommend approval for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero four, LDR twenty-three dash zero two.
I have a motion from Ms. Baker. I got a second from Vice Chair Long. Um, any comments on the motion? Dude, if she says nay to a motion, just because of the fact. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we can go on to number nine.
An ordinance of the city of Newberry, Florida, relating to the amendment of the official zoning atlas for the rezoning of twenty point six eight acres, more or less, pursuant to an application by the city of Newberry, amending the official zoning atlas of the city in Newberry Land Development Regulations, providing for rezoning from Latchell County Agricultural A zoning district to the city of Newberry Agricultural A zoning district on certain lands within the corporate limits of the city of Newberry, Florida, which have been annexed there too. The tax parcel number is zero one nine two eight dash zero zero five dash zero zero zero, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing effective date. The appropriate motion is passed, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero six, upon its reading by title only.
All right. Staff already gave their report, and their recommendations correct. Got a head nod from JP. We're on, we're on record pace to finish ten items. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to recommend approval for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero six, LDR twenty-three dash zero three.
I got a motion from Ms. Baker? I got a second from Ms. Polo. Any comments on the motion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, last item, number ten.
An ordinance of the city of Newberry, Florida, relating to the amendment of the official zoning atlas for the rezoning of forty acres, more or less, pursuant to an application by the city of Newberry, amending the official zoning atlas of the city of Newberry Land Development Regulations, providing for rezoning from Latchell County Agricultural A zoning district to city of Newberry Agricultural A zoning district on certain lands within the corporate limits of the city of Newberry, Florida, which have been annexed there too. Tax parcel numbers zero one eight three four dash zero zero eight dash zero 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 and zero one eight three four dash zero one two dash zero zero zero, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing effective date, the appropriate motion is passed, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, upon its reading by title only.
All right, thank you very much. Staff, we are on the same page. You gave your overview, head nod.
I just have one, one comment. Uh, it is our intent to bring all the rezonings and land use changes to the January twenty-third city commission, so, that's it. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I was actually gonna make a comment at the end of all of them. That being said, New Year's, you're starting off with a bang, Ms. Baker. What do we got?
Um, I would like to make a motion to recommend approval for ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, LDR twenty-three dash zero four.
All right, I got a motion from Ms. Baker.
Second.
Second from Ms. Polo. Oh, any public comments on the motion? Any comments on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, ma- motion passes unanimously. Uh, for the record, like JP mentioned earlier, all these will be, uh, going before the city commission meeting on January twenty-third. All right, with that being said, we are out of quasi judicial. And topics for members' discussion.
I have nothing.
For someone with all the motions on the floor. Nothing, nothing from. It was awesome. Thank you. Ms. Polo?
I tell everybody Happy New Year.
Well, Happy New Year. Um, I just wanna give a big shout out to everybody that works very hard on the Christmas parade. Um, and our small-town festival really brings that small-town feel. I'm very fortunate and blessed to live in a great town of Newberry. Wanna wish everybody, uh, Happy New Year, um, and thank you to everybody that made these holidays awesome for our city.
Uh, ditto to all of that. I mean, we, and we will, I'm not sure if it'll be the next commission meeting, but very soon, we'll be, um, offering our gratitude to all the different local entities uh, that stepped forward to make Newberry the Christmas capital of Latchell County. From Christmas lights to paying off electric bills, I mean, we've really had organizations step up to just make this a very special year. Um, on a different note, I wanted to invite everybody, um, twenty twenty-three is the one. Twenty twenty-three is the one hundred year anniversary of the Rosewood massacre, it happened in nineteen twenty-three. Uh, the foundation, the Rosewood Foundation has been working really hard for the past six months to eight months, planning. A year of memorial events, uh, the very first event is gonna happen this Saturday at Bo Diddley Park. Bo Diddley Plaza, is that right, Bo Diddley, yeah, yeah, I was thinking Dudley, Dudley Farm, Bo Diddley, alright. Um, both folks know that, you know, Rosewood was a city that was burned to the ground, people were massacred. But what most people don't know is that the reason that happened was because the husband who uh, asked for assistance from the KKK. Was able to telegraph the KKK New Year's Eve rally, which was happening at Bo Diddley Plaza. Uh, on New Year's Eve in nineteen twenty-two. So, the KKK left from downtown Gainesville and went to Rosewood. So, we're gonna begin the year of memorial events by going back to downtown Gainesville. Uh, and, and starting that year of events uh, there. What most folks also don't know is that the people who were able to escape the, um, from Rosewood, a lot of them put down roots in the city of Archer. So, there's a real link between Archer and Rosewood, uh, and so making uh, making Latchell County residents aware. That Rosewood is not a, just a Levy County story, it's also a Latchell County success story where people were resilient and determined and survived. Uh, and escaped, that's kinda the message that we want uh, to, uh, to help people understand. That's what we're gonna be uh, talking about on uh, Saturday. So Saturday, if you join us four to seven, uh, the program is an hour from four to five. We've invited all of the subcommittees that have been working on truth and reconciliation in Latchell County to also come and set up their tents. Um, certainly, that day is about Rosewood, but it's also about all of the racial reconciliation work. That has been happening in Latchell County and, and this country uh, for quite some time, so we're hoping that people will come. And not just hear the work that the Rosewood Foundation is doing, but also hear the work that the Newberry Truth and Reconciliation Committee is doing. We've got another committee that's been working with Dudley uh, Park, Dudley State Farms uh, to move the Perkins House on. Um, just about every city in Latchell County has a subcommittee, and hopefully the majority of them will be able to be free that day and come and share their stories, so. Um, we, you know, we've got it out, four to five is gonna be about Rosewood and, and Rosewood's history, and then we're gonna be encouraging people to visit. Uh, all of the subcommittees and learn about that work for, you know, we'll have background music and entertainment uh, until seven. Uh, so, hope you can come and then stay tuned for other events that are happening, um, I know the Rosewood Foundation, we're planning. Uh, three large events over the course of the year, uh, and there's some other things that are happening um, uh, around the, the year as well, around those events. So, I'll try my best to make sure that you guys are aware of, and anything that you can come and attend, we would certainly love to have you, Happy New Year, questions?
Do you have any marketing collateral on that, that the Chamber of Commerce can share?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Can email that stuff to me, I'll be very glad to share the message, Ms. Lizzy is a, she's a force to be reckoned with.
She is, at the next weekend, I think there's a gala where she's gonna be getting an award. Um, so, I'll, I'll send that information as well, I'm sure she would love to have a, a, a big local contingent there cheering her on. So, thank you for that.
Alright, staff, and city attorney.
Happy New Year, everybody, thank you for that history, those things I'd never heard before, so appreciate that, very interesting piece of story.
Uh, it's definitely hard to hear, but it needs to be heard, it needs to be told. Appreciate that as well, thank you. Staff, do we have a? Comments, any? Nothing, alright, would that be? Oh, wait, hold on.
Um, I'll have to get with here, we have a list of, I think we generally do based on like, uh, organizations. And it's for everybody that's in that organization. I appreciate, I always say that we should recognize City of Newberry, and they always say, no, 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 we're, we, we work for the city, I say, yeah, but y'all kill it, right? Did you see that the High Springs Fire Department? Uh, bowed down to the Newberry Fire Department's play, and I mean, I don't know how you couldn't, but that, cuz that was an amazing uh, display. But you know, when the, when the chief's wife is an artist, that's a pretty good, uh, it's a pretty good little advantage there you got.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, I think after two wins in a row, they get retired for a certain period of time, to give others a chance.
I think we just have to up other departments' budget for uh, Christmas decorations, alright?
I mean.
I can see those lights going all over to the second story to save a little gingerbread man from the second story, that'd be great.
Uh, yeah, that was pretty awesome, but. Alright, well, with that, um, thank you, everybody, and meeting is adjourned.